Mr. Mayor, I'd like to just a brief update that the building is on schedule. The line of the day, the elevator is there, we're finishing the path and the painting, artwork is there. So I would say we are all on schedule, hopefully we will get the building by the end of July. We're still working on the pavement, a couple of issues out there, but we do have a contingency plan. If there's an emergency, we'll implement that in the beginning of the plan. That's all that I have to say.
Okay. Any questions? We'll move on to grant marshal policy. Adam?
Just looking for the mic over there, we only have one. Grant marshal policy, Jason and I worked on this, Manny Allison, Jason worked on this. Back and forth, we presented it to Pat and then went on. This is basically, we're working just a policy that basically is what's happened over the years, just so that it's in writing, so everybody understands this is how it's done. Pick the grand marshal for the parade. Just heading on, everybody agrees, thank you.
Is there any questions for Adam?
No, thank you.
Do you have a certain view to the motion for this?
Are you ready?
Review it, Pat. You got highlights of it?
Can we go over it?
Sure, yeah.
Adam, you got me confused there, thank you.
So...
I like the enthusiasm.
Yeah, I was trying to speed us up. So, the 4th of July parade, the Lions Club's put that parade on for years. So it'd be for them to continue to pick the grand marshal for that parade. Kind of a date that was set forward would be by June 1st, they would pick who the grand marshal is gonna be. No later than June 1st, they'd pick who that was gonna be. And then staff would present that to council at whenever that next meeting would be, who the grand marshal is gonna be for the parade. Kind of the same thing for the Christmas parade, that's done by the Rotary. Been done by them for over 20 years. They would pick the grand marshal for that parade by November 1st. And at the next meeting, we would present to council who that grand marshal is.
Would you say present to council? Assuming those are recommendations by those particular organizations. And council would also have the opportunity to drop names in the hat as well for selection of grand marshal.
So the way that the policy, the way that we drafted this right now, it doesn't have that recommendation. We can back up those dates for council to give, let's say, staff dates earlier on. And then we can give those to each organization, so that the council has a say in the process of who's getting picked for grand marshal.
Right, because that's what I thought the intent was, drafting the policy was to give. Because as Jason said, 90 to 95 percent of staff is being used to organize and put together these parades.
Yes, we have taken the parades over from said organization.
So I think that, you know, my understanding is that the policy was going to have them as just an input into the selection of a recommendation of the grand marshal. Council ultimately has that final decision, and we also have the opportunity to bring forth things.
Then that would've been a misunderstanding on my part. I thought we were trying to write down what we do now, and I create a policy frameworked around that. But if we want to modify that, we're perfectly, we can head in that direction. We'll just re-draft the policy and come back to the next meeting with more of those type recommendations.
Adam, I would recommend since council will have input, move those dates back.
Yeah, we would have to pull them...
Pull those dates back to give us time to...
At least.
But I would have to get a grant marshal also.
Yes, sir.
So we want to handle this for an additional... Just have Adam come back with the new files.
We'll just come back in July with adding in a council portion of that policy.
Yeah, in other words, just take the, you know, it's ultimately, I guess, a council decision. That's what you're saying. It's, they can put up a recommendation, but the council...
So we want them to put records, so...
They can recommend, right.
They're gonna recommend to us, and we're going to...
They're gonna recommend the one they picked.
And we recommend who we want to pick.
And then ultimately, the council has names they dropped in earlier, and the council makes the plans.
Perfect, we'll do that.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll see, update on nonprofit organization park usage fee schedule. Jason?
All right, I'm writing a couple of notes for now. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Similar to the grand marshal parade policy, at the last council meeting, we discussed having a policy in place for fee waivers for nonprofit organizations if they're still using the park. We created, the town staff created a policy. We met with the attorneys to have them review it. They recommended a couple of changes. We've then engaged those changes, and I do not believe that there's a copy in front of everyone, I'm not sure. But I know that we have been waiting to just finalize that. We're gonna get back with the attorneys to find the notes that we've changed, make sure she's in approval of that, and then come back to council and make sure everything is approved for that. But I can give you the gist of the concept that we're trying to forward for everyone. And the goal would be to have a policy in place that there is a set number of dates allowed from the town to give to nonprofit organizations. And then there's a step-by-step process that the town would enforce that the nonprofit that is requesting the date would have to provide the town with the information, including the date of the facility, the type of facility they're looking for, what the facility will be used for, the size of the group, description of the activities, the breakdown of what will take place throughout the day, as well as contact information from the organization, and explanation for the fee waiver. And then what we would do from that is take all of the requests to our park committee, and ultimately have the park committee approve the number of requests that are permitted, and then bring that back and have them approve that, so that we have a pack of group of people, like the park committee, looking at every request each month. And we put out the policy that there is a request that's done 45 days in advance, at a minimum, because that way that'll give the park committee a chance to always review the request before their date will begin, since we have a park committee meeting every 30 minutes. So we'll finalize the policy, get back with the attorneys to make sure that everything is good, and have it through the council meeting, if that sounds good.
Sounds good to me.
Okay.
That's the update.
Very good, thank you.
That brings us to item D, you and, oh, yeah.
Yes, I'm sorry. Oh, yes, Jim, would you take another place?
Thank you, David, for getting this on. Now, this is, we met with Patrick, I met with all the departments. And we're going back to this year, the 1617 year. We reviewed all the department's budgets, actual results. We cleared all of the purchase orders, so we did a thorough review. So we came up with two operations that even come before you. First one is allocation of fund salary for the administrative department. Basically, what I'm requesting is moving money from the Human Resource Cost Center, 10-0-0-5,000-142-001, Social Security match, transfer out $34,400, and transfer that to salaries in the administration budget, No effect to the total budget, it's one expense up, one expense down. So I ask for your approval on that, and we wanted to get this done before the end of the year.
Just because they, when they had the chance to vote on the Social Security anticipation, they, the vote was overwhelmingly against it.
Correct, Gordon, that's the money he's coming out of. We have a buddy who did the 1617 budget for that, about $65,000. And I'm asking to move 34 to cover the shortfall administrative budget.
Any questions? Want the motion? So if someone wants to make a motion, or a favor? Be unanimous, motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim, to save time, why don't you update if I can? Just the item, for the budget item, if you could just identify it, I sort of wanted to identify it.
The consent agenda was another cleanup item, and this was for the legal...
You can't do that.
We've already done it.
No, you gotta wait till it comes up.
All right, all right, all right. Sorry, I gotta see you a few more minutes here.
It's good exercise. That brings us to new business, traffic calming devices, and B and H, social services.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Council, we've received, I guess for many years we've been receiving some speeding issues along those streets. It's a shortcut from either Wild to Monroe. And the last couple of weeks, we received more comments. So simply what we did is we used it for the bush this time, rather than slowing traffic. It's open road for money to another, rather than slowing traffic with speed bumps. We're using signage to make it full control, full stop control. It costs less money, it doesn't have any impact on the chassis system for the fire trucks, and also does not cause as much as noise and vibration at the speed bump. So simply strategically, we find sort of a midpoint that would make traffic slow down. You have to slow down, accelerate, slow down, accelerate. Two good intersections where we felt that the signage are there. The ones that's shown in orange, they're warning signs, so we want to make sure it's a safe operation. Usually when we put stop signs, we gotta give you the advanced warning sign. So we feel very comfortable about those, and I think Adam will move them forward with this decision.
They're on order. The signs are already on order.
Okay, so as soon as the signs are fabricated, we'll install them in one day, and put it into implementation.
So this is just an FYI? Yes.
Thank you. That brings us to the UCSO, this will be our 1718 budget, is that it?
Adam, if you don't mind, show that presentation. I've been working very closely with Captain Chase on all the contracts. I developed some comments, I submit them to Captain Chase. As soon as he gets feedback from financial, from finance, Union County Finance, we will meet with Sheriff Cathy, and we will present what we're recommending. And I don't, we do not see any changes at all. I think Chase and I will see eye to eye, and we're going to the contract, so we're gonna make it simple, not many changes. And the only change that I propose before Union County this year, rather than having four equal payments, we're gonna take the present value of those four equal payments. But what we're gonna do is, we're gonna pay Chase less money the first year and pay him more money the last year. And the reason for that is, as we grow, we might have, need more police force. So we want to reserve some of that money at the end, and we don't want to allow Chase, Captain Chase, to spend it the first year, so. I do agree with that, we're not changing the value at all. I did appreciate a council member of Shirley, I was very closely with her. I went back to the year 2013, and we went over the study. The recommendation for us right now that I'm putting before the board is to continue working closely with Union County, keep outlets in the service. Where our benefits are there, the cost is much less cheaper and more reasonable. I do have some graphs to show you that we're paying the least per capita in our vision when it comes to police service. It should be in Sheriff B Drive. It should be under Union County Sheriff Department. It's a PDF file. Maybe Sheriff God, Adam, it's not there? We'll be more than happy if it's something, I do have a flash of that.
I'm fine with it, I'm happy with it.
I think that would be cheap.
So Patrick, normally the situation and operating front, that's a good point to do that. Okay, so, you know, I appreciate that, if they're willing to, when the sun shines a little brighter, takes some more sun, kind of help it in the beginning, that's great.
That's the intent, so that's all we're trying to do.
Nothing about other?
No, sir, as soon as, as soon as we see, we need to check Cathy, give the feedbacks from finance, we'll bring it back before council.
Thank you.
But we do have a good angle of next year, by the way. This isn't something that we need to jump on. But we would like to do it through in the next four weeks.
That brings Jim back for the budget transfer.
The budget that was on the consent agenda was the legal cost center. We're about to come before you and transfer money into, I'm sure we have enough money to get it to the end of the year. And it was Patrick's idea, it was a good idea. What we did, we moved money, again, that's neutral, zero to the budget. What we did, we moved money, for example, the legal team did a lot of work on human resources this last year. So we moved money out of the human resource budget into legal. They did a lot of work on the solid waste contract for us, saved us a lot of money. Aaron, you did, guys did a great job. We moved money out of solid waste surplus into planning, because that was the cost center that was overseeing that.
Okay, so how much are we talking about?
This is a total transfer of $60,000. And this is the last cleanup for the year. We'd like to get it done before the end of June. Like I said, we met with all the departments, and everyone was on budget, or ahead of budget. We're expecting another good year, revenues are up, told me that last meeting.
Mr. Daniels made the motion to approve, or a favor?
Thank you.
Be unanimous. Thank you, Jim. That brings us to discussion items A, this will be your 1718 budget, discussion may tax some fees. Oh.
It's a mute point, isn't it?
Yep, good, thank you.
Would you like to end the discussion?
Yes.
Okay, that closes the discussion, that brings us to B, Solid Waste of the UBSA. Adam?
All right, good evening, Mayor and Council. We're here tonight just to talk about the implementation phase that we're going through right now with God Bless USA. We've been meeting bi-weekly with them as we've been going through this implementation phase. Here tonight, we have Mark, I'm a besties name, Pergalise?
Pergalise.
Pergalise, Jacob Klinger, and Lynn Williams. See, her name's easy, how come they couldn't? So Mark is the district manager for Waste Connection, kind of, and the facility down in Monroe. Jacob will be kind of our daily operations person for the Indian Trail contract. He'll oversee all the trucks that are running in our area. And then Lynn oversees the office side, so all the kind of billing and the calls for service that come in and different things like that.
Adam, just one question. Roots are staying the same, I just want to know, would the same day schedule, like I'm picked up on Wednesday, will I continue, or?
So that is the biggest thing, and that's why that's, I put it, kind of, as the third thing down there, just because I was coming to it, but yes. We have worked with them right now, and at first, there was the thought of maybe a few routes maybe changing, and we kind of mutually came to the decision that, let's stay with what we have right now. It's working as it is. Let's do it for a couple of months and see if then some things maybe shift once they...
It's the same pickup time of the other day.
Well, those may shift a little bit, but it is still the day that it goes out. So your can is supposed to be put out by 7:00 in the morning, and they're supposed to have been picked up by...
You're into that, it's our responsibility to have them out by 7:00. And if we miss that, that's on us, thinking that the old guy used to pick it up at 11:00. You're not responsible for that.
Right, okay.
Adam, would that fall under routes or staying the same?
Yes.
Okay, a district areas.
They've held two job fairs, as they said they would in their implementation phase. Here in Indian Trail, they held one at the CAC, and they actually just held one today at the park, at the outside amphitheater of Justin Square. They've hired five new drivers, that's not all just for Indian Trail, but that's out of that facility out of Monroe. They hired a new actual bilingual consultant, or bilingual person that'll be in the office answering phones. And we know that we have, sometimes we need that. And they actually did some analysis, they needed to hire additional mechanic because of the additional trucks that they'll have running for our route. This is a big note, there, you know, we talked about as we went through this, you know, how are they, as any new vendor to the town, gonna step up and become a part of the team that we are as staff and Indian Trail and all the residents. Well, they've already done that, they're sponsoring an event, not this weekend, but next weekend, at the CAC, to look back at the legends. And then as well, they're gonna be bringing a brand-new truck that they just got in. It's not one of our trucks, but it is a brand-new truck, so the touch of truck that's coming Saturday, I mean, this coming Friday night at the concert. So they're already stepping up to that plate to be a part of the team. They've ordered all the same new carts. I'll tell you that Pam in the office is extremely excited that they're going to be using the same tracking system that we've used for the last five years, she doesn't have to learn a new one. We're gonna be mailing out calendars, magnetic calendars, they're probably gonna be somewhere in the range of about 6x6, 6x7. That'll be for all your pickup dates, as you were talking about, your service date, when your bulk pickup is, things like that. Contract as well, we've negotiated, it was in the contract, that four dates a year for bulk pickup. We've spread those out kind of evenly throughout the year. A big new thing is the alternative recycling program. That's all those things that we've never been able to recycle before, that's your paint, that's your light bulbs, you know, your CFL light bulbs, those type things. Those can be taken five days a week down to the transport facility in Monroe, and dropped off, and they'll take care of them. So no longer you have to drive all the way to the landfill way out of Union County, or find some other way to get rid of them. Trucks.
Five days a week, I'm saying, this Monday.
Trucks, so they have ordered the four new trucks, the natural gas vehicles. I'll come back to that in just a second. They've also ordered a new truck for bulk and yard waste pickup. We had everybody seeing that truck recently, these last couple of weeks, because it's been bulk pickup through the current provider. It's a little bit of a different truck. They're also updating a 2015 truck with a new payload area, which is that back area of the truck. That'll be used for your alleyways, so your Holly Parks, your Bonterras. Cornerstone has some alleys, that's that smaller truck that was required through the RRP process. And we are working with them right now on that payload advertisement area. So looking at this picture, that's that area where it says, "God Bless USA", so like, on one side of the truck, on one of the trucks, there's the ability for the town to be able to advertise for upcoming events or something that the town feels that we want to get out to the residents. And then that truck would be moved around through town as that advertisement was on the truck, so all different residents would be able to see it. Back to the four new trucks. One little pickup that we've had, is how late we went in the game for approving the solid waste contract. When they can finally pull the trigger with the provider for those CNG trucks, they're on about a three-week delay from when July 31st starts for their first day of service, till when those trucks will be here. They are gonna use five, four trucks that meet the requirements of the contract for those first three weeks, but they won't be the CNG vehicles until they come in. But they're gonna meet the contract in using newer trucks, until those new trucks come in. I'm available for any questions, and they're available for any questions.
What about the paper shutters? We don't have that now, like we have, we have it at the shopping center with ABC stores. Are we gonna have that at all for the residents of Indian Trail?
You're talking about like the big truck, the shredded truck, or something like that?
Yeah, the saving, everything.
We haven't talked about that, but that's definitely something like in our next bi-weekly meeting, we could talk about having available at some time throughout the year.
That would be great.
I'm going to assume that the bulk pickup will be October, so it should take over until July 31st.
Correct. That's just listing out through the year. We kind of started with a January bulk pickup.
There's always somebody that might say, July 31st, you said July pickup, on July 31st. So just to clarify.
Thank you. Thank you.
That brings us to our vendor policy, Mr. Wyman, can you put that on there?
Thank you. So I want to put this on the agenda tonight to bring plus a discussion, because I've been getting a lot of feedback from quite a few vendors that have tried to work with the town of Indian Trail, either with, you know, in past events. And quite frankly, the feedback hasn't been exactly positive. So I want to just have a discussion around what our existing policies are dealing with vendors, the specific type of information that we request from our vendors, and kind of throw out some ideas around what we can do to improve our relationship and our view in vendors' eyes, and the way that we deal with the vendors here in Indian Trail. I did have a couple of vendors that actually said they're not coming back to the town, and that concerns me, you know, as an elected official, that, you know, if we have vendors that don't want to come to town, you know, that could potentially hurt us from an image perspective, it could also hurt us from, just from an economic development perspective, right? Because we want to promote our parks, we want to promote our activities, and we want to get good quality vendors, right, that come to the town. I think the residents expect that, and they anticipate that, and, you know, I think that just helps enhance those activities. So I guess overall, if I could just give an understanding, and I don't know if Jason or Adam, one of you, what is our vendor policy, right? Do we have a vendor policy, do we have a vendor management policy? And if you could just kind of walk us through what that is, and what specific type of information is being requested, and how that policy aligns with other municipalities within their events or park director partners.
Sure, so I can take, I'll take the first part of that, and then I'll pass off to Jason for the second part of it. We do have a vendor policy, we kind of have a few vendor policies in the sense of, depending on the size or the type of event that it is. Mainly in those policies, we're asking for the business, the contact phone numbers, mailing address, type of business. I actually have one of the vendor, like, vendor application for when, for if somebody was coming to the movie night this weekend, or a concert next weekend. This would be the application that they would fill out. It's one little bit of information up at the top. Then they say that they agree to a indemnification clause from the town, and then they sign it that they've read all the rules and regulations.
Okay.
So how that aligns with other municipalities, I'll let Jason handle. Got it under the question?
And to piggyback off that, the rules and regulations that he was referring to, those are looked at from other municipalities, and we share probably 100% or close to 100% of all the same rules and regulations for all our vendors.
Okay. So let's say a particular vendor in a particular Indian Trail sponsored event, right? And that particular vendor may be coming in either by providing some kind of visual, or maybe some kind of eatery, or maybe some kind of drink. And that there is a separate sponsor or vendor that that particular primary vendor works with, that maybe they're contributing money that's specific to that particular vendor. Is it, is it our policy to call those particular sponsors and ask how much money those particular sponsors have provided to that individual sponsor that's outside the realm of the specific Indian Trail event? So my question is, from a policy perspective, what are we doing? What do we have in writing that gives... that gives, that clearly articulates that we're going to do due diligence from a call perspective and just from a perspective finding out where your financials are? Do we have a policy like that, or is that just standard procedure?
If we have a vendor that's come to us and they want to, so I think we're using vendor and sponsor as two separate terms, so a vendor coming to the town, they would fill out this application, a sponsor, there's different applications and different information that they would provide to the town.
Okay, let's say that that particular vendor, they're coming into the town, and they're selling whatever, or they're providing some kind of entertainment, some kind of service, whatever they're doing, but they're the primary vendor, right, they're coming in, and they're part of that event. Well, let's say that that particular vendor has their own sponsors that's independent of the Indian Trail event, right, because I know, we, we as, when we sponsor events, we try and get sponsors to, you know, provide monies and other things to, to help out that event. But let's say that that particular vendor has their own sponsors that help provide whatever money, whatever from that particular sponsor. Is it our policy that we call those sponsors of that vendor to ask them how much they're contributing as part of the financials that we're looking at for that particular vendor?
Not for the vendor for Indian Trail.
Why would you?
Well, that's where I'm trying to go with this policy.
Why, well, what?
So that's, that's what I want to try and drive towards, is our policy doesn't necessarily dictate or allow us to go and ask further questions on, down the line of that particular vendor, correct?
Correct, I can, we can, we can speak about that exact issue if we want to, or I can address it, that one now, or we can address it?
I just wanted, from a policy perspective, I just want to make sure that we don't have policies in place, because if we did, I was going to recommend you change it, but if we don't have those policies in place, then that's great. So how do we handle sponsorship then, from a policy perspective, how, what's our sponsorship policy? Do we have a sponsorship?
Yes, we have sponsorship, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the vendor policies and sponsorship policies are completely two different items. The sponsorship policies, we have a contract in place with every sponsor, whether they sponsor a banner in the park, a sign in the park, or they're sponsoring major equipment like playground equipment piece, or playground or fitness equipment. Same thing if they're sponsoring an event, if they sponsor an event, we have a contract in place that states for the dollar amount given, they receive XYZ, and in return, they're getting XYZ from us, and they give us XYZ. So every contract, or every sponsorship has a contract.
Right, and the contract that we enter into is with that primary sponsor, not the sponsors of that sponsor.
Right.
So if it were, if the town is hosting an event, the town being the individual seeking sponsorships?
Correct, well, let's say that sponsor has other sponsors to contribute as part of whatever they're providing, right, so let's say, I'm engaged, let's say I'm an individual that's engaging with the town, I'm going to provide a banner, the banner's going to be saying XYZ, right, however, I as a sponsor, maybe I'm a nonprofit, or maybe I'm some other organization, and I seek sponsorship funds to help put together that banner, right, that I'm going to then provide to the town as part of that event. Is it policy that we call those individual sponsors that's contributing as part of that banner that I'm providing? Is that, do we have, is that required as part of the, as part of the application, and as part of the policy?
I was going to say, what, I mean, obviously, you want to go to some point, which probably nobody here knows, why don't, why don't we just ask them to bring the policies in at the next meeting, bring the contracts in at the next meeting, look over the policy and contract, and then move from there? Because I'd like to read it and see what it looks like.
Well, I can, right, that's a great idea, but I think I also want to get on the record tonight what the policy is, and then we can bring it back and have further discussion, because we may need to change the policy depending on the input dedicated this evening.
I'd like to read it too.
If I may say something, Mr. Warren, I'd like to answer your question. From my knowledge, I don't think there is anything right now in the policy regarding the secondary sponsor.
Right, right, okay, perfect. And if they're sure of it, why are we there?
Since I have my hand raised, I'm going to go ahead. I would suggest kind of what Gary said, Mr. Warren, why don't you just talk with the, I mean, if you have, well, okay, all right, if you have, then, then we can answer, because I don't know what the policy is, I haven't read the policy, and I don't think anybody else has read it, so if, you know, and I don't know if someone's complaining, but if someone's complained, or somebody's complaining, that, I think I'd take my complaint to the town staff and say, you know, what is, because I don't think any of us know what, what you're talking about right now. Anyway, so if you just take it to the, to these, say, hey, you know, did you do this, did you, you didn't do this, or how are you doing, and then we can all come back and read it.
No, Mr. Cohen, I understand, no, no, that's fine, and to your point, I did, you know, I had raised this to Patrick, I've talked to Adam, but I think that it speaks to a broader kind of issue and concern that we are getting, at least I'm getting vendors, and I think the mayor also are getting, is getting vendors that are complaining about these particular events, and I don't know if it speaks to the policy or if it speaks to something else, and that's why, as a governing body, the first place we should always look at, obviously, is the policy to make sure that if there's recommendations or ways we can improve those policies to improve that relationship, I think that's, that would be our new deal with us.
Well, I understand that, but I also, if you have someone that's upset about something, then there's two sides to that story too, so I mean, sit down, talk to both sides and find out if there's really a problem or, or not, I guess.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Warren did have a conversation with me regarding to that, and I also had a meeting this morning with one of the vendors, and we're going to have to, so I think the next step, I'd really agree, improve the policy vibe, and make sure we're all on the same page, and then do whatever it takes for us to put it forward to council, clarify it, so we can make a decision on what direction to move.
Thank you.
And I would need to hear what the issue is, who, not, not say who it is, but what the issue specifically is to help gauge and how to adjust the policy.
Correct.
That is why?
Yes.
My question is to Citizen of the Court? Have they recommendation?
Well, no, Citizen of the Court was, I believe Councilman Cohen brought that up, it was a good idea, and the last time we implemented Citizen of the Court was back in December, and this is for June, so I just want to know, is this still in operation? If it's not, then I like the idea, maybe we can revive it and see what council thinks about it. Is it still in operation? If it's not, do we want to continue it or just kill it?
So I'll make a recommendation that staff bring recommendations at the next county council meeting.
For?
For the, what is it, the employee or the court?
Citizen of the Court.
Well, here's the thing, if it's already been implemented, I would think that, that recommendations should be out there, but I'm not against that, it's just an idea to say, well, I haven't heard anything about Citizen of the Court for a while.
And now we've heard it?
I think so. All right. Just a quick thing, I don't, I don't necessarily think it's staff's job to do that, also, council wants to come up with a, the one thing I want to avoid, and then we, I want to move on quickly, if we can, is avoid a council member walking in here and, or a staff walking in and just saying, in the past, what happened is a council member walked in and said, hey, this is who I think it ought to be, but when you come in and you say, I think this is who it ought to be, it kind of puts everybody under a lot of pressure to say, no, if you know what I mean. So what we need to do is maybe, maybe have a certain meeting that we can put up two or three different names, or four different names of different people, and that we can vote on them.
Why?
Exactly, and why, and that way, it doesn't, if you just put one name out or whatever and say, anyway. Well, just to, just to put it capital, if we implement it and it works the first time, I would think the policy should still be, you know, on the books, and we would just follow up. My question is, are we, are we, is it still something that we're doing? Because people have asked me, like, hey, I would like to gain, you know, put down for that, it is, okay.
Moving along, I'm going to ask you a question. Would I just add to that policy, specific dates within quarters, for FYI in council's ear? I know the budget time has been quite stressful.
When's the next week?
Yeah, the second week of year.
No, July, the second week of July, if you got a name, bring one, how's that?
There we go.
There you go, I like that.
All right, move on. Employee recognition.
Employee recognition day is something that was also discussed, and Patrick, I was just thinking for morale and for starting a trend, I would leave it up to you and staff to say, do you want to take that day where you can, you can dress a certain way, or food color in your hair, if you have hair, whatever, just kind of like recognize that, that it's your day, but I would leave it up to you and your staff.
Thank you, we will be more than happy.
We used to do that, and we, the council, served dinner to the employees, and we brought food on the employees, and we grew up here, and gave awards out for like, who was here for five or 10 years, and they played some silly games, somebody made up, somebody was really good at doing that, and they wore funny hats, and it was just a relaxing time, and that was stopped by one of the previous managers.
We actually did that, too terribly long ago.
That was over.
Yeah, I mean, it was done somewhere else, but they gave awards away, yeah, that's, good idea, sir.
Well, that was a good idea.
Yeah, sure, well, we already did, yeah, it's still a good idea. But also, Patrick, a couple of weeks, about six weeks ago, Jim, Mrs. Howell and I, and Adam, we attended a function, and what it does, it helps to bond a bit, I mean, from a perspective of the staff and the council members, try to get to know, and I think that's, that's always great, because I know Adam more now than, you know, he's just, you know, I spent like five hours with him, so I know a little bit more about Adam, and I think that's admirable. He's fine, he's fine.
You know, I think that's, that's great, I just hope that, I just hope all councils show up to that, because I know we did that before, and we hope councils show up, so we're going to do that, I hope that all council members can then come in.
Can we recommend, Patrick, you come back with a day, maybe sometime during the summer, that you'd just like to have an employee recognition day, which employee, whatever?
Absolutely.
Walk around with funny hats, painted hair, whatever you feel like you'll be doing.
Bring a keg of beer, free beer day?
I've told that, I was going to mention.
Mr. Daniels will be doing all the cooking.
No problem. Do you like barbecue? I can do it.
We'd be more than happy to look into that, we'd come back with something.
Find a day that could be in the near future?
We'd become creative on that.
And, and get a hockey game started.
Oh.
All right.
That brings us next to the closed session. So junction with NCGS 143318, 1183, considering given instructions concerning a potential or actual airplane, and most of the closed sessions will move.